Good morning and welcome to the August 15th Business Meeting at the Clackamas County Fair. We'll call the meeting to order and ask the County Administrator Gary Schmidt to please take the role.
Yes Chair, first our staff support today Scott Seaco County Council, Kevin Moss Clerk to the Board, Roll Call Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Here. Please rise and join me in the presentation of colors. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated and thank you to DFW Post 1324 for the presentation of colors. We're doing something a little different, we, some of you have bingo cards out there. In addition to having the business meeting here at the fair, we're going to do something different. Anyone who's in the crowd is welcome to play a round of silent bingo. We have bingo cards and pens at the seat and our county staff have more if you need them.
Corn dog.
What?
(laughing).
Corn dog. Oh, sorry, sorry. Go ahead, go, continue Chair Bernard.
Weird.
(laughing).
The cards have words and phrases that we'll reference during the meeting. For example, many cards have a pledge of allegiance on them. You can mark that, it went off now since we just said that a moment ago. During the meeting, just mark off the words that we or presenters say. Watch out for Joe over there, he's got some real technical terms. You'll also notice a place on the back of your card for your name and address, just fill it out and complete the card and the staff will collect it at the end. We'll send you numerous messages. There are prizes for our first 10 winners, plus one of us commissioners will randomly draw more winners immediately following the meeting and all cards turned in, prizes include rodeo passes and ride tickets. Again, our staff will grab your cards at the end of the meeting. One important thing, please do not yell out the answers, bingo, because we don't have to, we don't want to disturb the meeting. That's why it's called silent bingo.
Sorry.
Yes.
Sorry.
Again, simply get the attention of one of the staffers. And that's that and I want to announce first that we'll recess as a Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Housing Authority Board for the next item. And with that, I'd like to introduce our Housing Authority Commissioner Paul Reynolds. Thank you for coming. Gary, oh wait, go ahead.
We'll start with the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Thank you Administrator Schmidt. On today's Housing Authority Consent Agenda, we have approval to execute a contract between the Housing Authority of Clackamas County and A1 Quality Construction for on-demand removal and replacement of flooring in public housing units. Approval to apply for an additional mainstream vouchers providing rental assistance to non-elderly disabled families through the Notice of Funding Availability. Approval to apply for a grant for 25 new limited-term vouchers for Foster Youth to Independence Rental Assistance Program. Approval of Resolution Number 1939 authorizing the execution, acknowledgement, and delivery of transaction documents for the Hillside Manor Rehabilitation Project. Approval of an easement for the City of Milwaukee allowing the installation of storm water pipe on hillside public housing property. And approval of Resolution 1940 authorizing the Housing Authority to submit the Section 8 Management Assessment Program certification of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Thank you Kevin. Do any commissioners wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
A move we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and second that we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Thank you Paul.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Don't forget to stop off to see some of the chickens and the cows and the llamas and the...
Oh, I hope Paul goes to the rodeo, don't you?
To the what?
To the rodeo.
The rodeo.
The rodeo.
Yes, the rodeo.
I think Paul should play some bingo.
The Board will now adjourn as the Housing Authority and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners from the remainder of the meeting. And with that, we move on to some presentations. The first one is by Joe Merrick and Rob, I don't see Rob. Oh, there's Rob. Department of Transportation and let me see, I'm supposed to, yeah, I guess you're up first.
Good morning Chair Bernard Commissioners. My name is Joseph Merrick, I'm the Traffic Safety Program Manager for the county. I want to start by thanking you and the Commission for all of your support and direction related to traffic safety and health in the county over the years. The county experiences an average of right around 30 fatalities each year on all roads in the county and clearly that number should be zero. After all, everybody deserves to get home safely to their family each night. In March, the Board of County Commissioners adopted the New Transportation Safety Action Plan which set a goal to eliminate fatal and serious injury crashes by 2035, consistent with the State of Oregon goal. To accomplish this, we have a lot of work to do to our road system, which we are actively working on, but this is really a very large team effort. And what I mean by that is that it really takes all of us as individuals to do our part and doing our best when we're using the transportation system, be it driving, walking, biking, using transit, or riding our horses. I'm going to turn it over to Rob Sadowski and Rob's going to explain one way that we're working on this task here at the county fair this year.
Thank you Joe. So one of the, I was about to blow everyone's head. So one of the things that we know is that when people commit to changing behavior, it takes a lot of effort just as an individual, but by signing a pledge and promising in the public, you're more likely to follow through. So we're putting, we've put together this pledge to drive safely. We've asked the Commissioners to take that pledge and anyone here who's interested also will be invited to take that pledge by signing on to this banner or coming out afterwards and coming to the Drive to Zero booth that has already had 200 people in the last two days sign that pledge. So we ask you to help model the way, the same as we've asked Chair Bernard and his colleagues to do that as well and he's going to now recite the pledge and then we're going to ask people to, if you agree to, say I agree.
Thank you. I pledge to drive safely because I want to do my part to eliminate traffic-related fatalities in Clackamas County. My Drive to Zero pledge shows that I care about everyone who shares the streets, including children, seniors, persons with disability, pedestrians, bicyclists, motorcyclists, and other motorists. Therefore, I pledge to do myself, my loved ones, and my community to be attentive, devote my full attention to driving with my eyes on the road, my hands on the wheel, and my mind on driving. Limit speed, drive within the speed limits and the condition of the roads, yield to pedestrians, stop for pedestrians at crosswalks and intersections, buckle up, buckle up every time I drive and insist that all my passengers and pets are also properly secured. Be alert, drive sober and alert, be patient, not let impatience, anger, or road rage impact the way I drive. Please repeat after me. I take this pledge. I take this pledge. Thank you. We encourage you to share your safe driving tips or the reason you want the county to commit to zero fatalities by using hashtag #DriveToZero on your social media. Back to Rob.
Thank you very much and we invite all of you to come. We'll have the pledge on the picnic table over here and if you want to come later, come check out the Drive to Zero booth. Thank you very much Commissioners.
Thank you. Thank you Joe. Next, we would like to welcome Lori Bothwell, Executive Director of Clackamas County Fair and Event Center up.
Good morning. Welcome County Commissioners to Clackamas County Day. I got my bingo and one crackerjacks. Woo! I would like to introduce you President Ted Coons who's going to talk about our master plan.
Well, good morning Commissioners. So yeah, in front of you, you actually have hot off the press this morning copies of our finalized master plan that we adopted last week. You know, a year and a half ago, we all met and we talked about some commitments that we needed to make. And this is one of the commitments we made to you is to accomplish this plan and I appreciate your support in getting all that done. Several people through several community meetings, stakeholder meetings, and so forth like that, have all worked hard to put this plan together and I think once you read through it, you'll see it sets the direction about where we as the fair and event center need to go. So, next step though, is start moving toward, forward with a strategic plan and some other things to continue with our commitments to you guys. I'm really proud to say that, you know, one of those commitments was, you know, looking at the way we do management of the fair and the event center and how we do that. Currently, we have a performance audit going on. We have somebody from the county in taking a look at how we manage our processes to see if there's any ways we can improve and become more efficient in what we do. Anyway, I just wanted to update you with where we were and thank you very much for your support as we move forward and let everybody know that in a very short time, of course it's fair right now and office staff's pretty busy, but as soon as we can, we'll get this up on our website so everybody can take a look at it then. Also, over at the information booth, there's actually a diagram of what we see the grounds looking like as we move forward with the master plan. So unless you have some questions, I'll go and conclude.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just would like to say, working with the fair board has been a real pleasure as the liaison from the county commission and I really want to congratulate you and your team for a job well done. It's an excellent plan and I look forward to working with you and as I know the rest of the board does in implementing the plan in the future.
Well, thank you very much and I think this will be some great exciting times for the fairgrounds here, so thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you Ted.
Yep, you guys have a great day.
You too.
Bye.
Thank you. Gary, what's next?
Next is an update on the new Extension Service Building presented by Mike Bondi, the Oregon State University Extension Service Officer.
Welcome Mike.
Good morning. Good morning, good morning. Thank you for having us here. I just wanted to update you, what's coming around now is a brand-new trifold. It just was updated this week. We've finally reached an important milestone. In July, 1st of July, we received approval from Oregon City for land use on the new Extension Education Center located on the corner of Warner Millie Road and Beaver Creek Road. That was a 15-month process. It unfortunately took a lot, lot longer than we had anticipated. I know you guys have been very involved in that, that process all the way along. I'm reflecting back on the then-county commissioners in November of 2015, said yes, please build that building and here's where we want you to build it. Now, almost five years later, we finally are moving forward and, and we've done all the planning. Tonight, we have a barbecue, Extension BBQ in the Grove. You're all invited to join us. We're going to have our project architect there. He's going to have pictures, renderings of the building, answer questions about it, and then highlight some of the really unique features. As you all know, it's going to be the first all-wood, public building, advanced wood technology, cross-laminated timber, mass plywood. It's going to be a showcase for forest products here in Clackamas County and we're really excited, proud to be part of this, and proud to put it on Clackamas County Red Soils Campus. So, please join us if you can tonight. Dinner is 5:00 to 7:00 PM. I'm inviting anyone from the public to join us as well. Barbecue tickets are $10. It's a chicken barbecue, it's going to be a great meal. 5:00 to 7:00 PM and then about 6:30, we'll do a little presentation and talk about the building and some of the details and where we're going from here forward. That updated trifold really talks about potential groundbreaking now looking like it's going to be probably spring of 2020, so we've got a lot to do between now and then to get contractors on site and ready to have a groundbreaking. Questions? Anything you'd like to ask me?
Any questions?
Just one, Mike, I'm gathering here from the trifold, the picture on the top, that the front of the building entrance is oriented to face Beaver Creek Road?
There's actually two entrances required for the building and for city, so there's a main entrance on Beaver Creek roadside opposite of what you see in that picture. What you see in that picture is the main entrance that'll be on the parking lot side, which is nearer the Shaver Building or adjacent to the Shaver Building, but there's two, two entrances.
Thank you. Martha?
I just wanted to thank you for all your hard work. Mike, we wouldn't have this if it hadn't been for you and it's been a long time coming. This was, this was an idea way back in the day, what, 2003, 2004?
That would be close.
But we're finally, we're finally bringing it to fruition, but it has been thanks to you and also want to thank you for helping us out with, you know, the county has a pollination initiative moving forward and we want to thank Extension for their help with that and all the other beekeepers and entomologists who are involved.
Well, yeah, it's been a pleasure to be involved in all the projects and it's great to finally see this one coming to fruition and I think 2020 is going to be a great year.
Me too.
Anybody else?
I did hear him say it was being made out of cross-laminated timber.
Yes.
Did anybody notice that? Anybody out there paying attention? Cross-laminated timber?
I looked specifically at, yep, looked specifically at the bingo sheet there Commissioner.
I want to make sure everybody was paying attention.
All right, I'd like to introduce Wendy Hein unless there's any other questions.
Go ahead.
I'd like to introduce Wendy Hein. Wendy Hein is our 4-H, one of our two 4-H faculty here in Clackamas County that provides leadership for our Club 4-H program and I know they always appreciate the opportunity to come share with you some of what's going on here with kids and county fairs. So Wendy, come on forward.
Thanks Mike. Welcome to the fair. Before we bring up some of our 4-H members and their projects, I'd like to share just a little bit about our participation levels this year. So county fair is an opportunity for 4-H members who are aged 5 to 18 to show what they've learned during the year. They are either interviewed by a judge or they have the opportunity to demonstrate their skills live in front of a judge here at a fair. And we also really appreciate that this is a venue where the community can come and see what they've learned and affirm that these young people are doing constructive things with their lives. So earlier this year, we've already held four of our county fair events, so you know, we had 182 youth who attended the Horse Fair here at the fairgrounds in July. We had 29 at our Dog Fair and one of them is back today to talk to you. We had five members at our Cat Show and one young man who brought his bearded dragon to our Herpetology Day. So a total of 596 are entered in one or more classes this week here at the fair, so grand total number of youth in all fairs is 740 this year. So at the Horse Fair, you know, they don't, they don't get this opportunity to meet you all the time, but I wanted to share some advice and lessons that our graduating seniors shared with us. So here's some of their quotes. "4-H taught me patience when things aren't working out exactly as you'd hoped, which with horses happens all too often." "My 4-H leader is always positive and encouraging. She taught me so much and I am forever grateful for everything she has done for me." "My favorite memories in 4-H would be of camping at fair and staying up way too late in a big tent with all my friends." "4-H has taught me to set goals for myself and to work hard to achieve them." This is my favorite. "A piece of advice, don't procrastinate on record books." "Look past the ribbon color you've earned. If you rode to the best of your ability, then that's all that matters." "It is important to help others out and be someone they can look up to by being an example of good deeds, kindness, and confidence." Those are the kind of young people who are graduating from our program this year. Now let's hear some of, from some of our 4-Hers who are here today. Kira first? Okay. Kira Lineback will be first.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Kira Lineback. I am 15 years old and I am part of Independent Grill Club and I am also a part of the Clackamas County Ambassador Team. My favorite projects are sheep and leatherwork. I would have to say my favorite part of fair would probably be seeing people that I haven't seen in about a year and making new friends. I'd like to thank you on behalf of the Clackamas County 4-H for always supporting us and I also have gift bags.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Deja Fitzwater. I'm 14 years old and I'm in Unfocused and Furry Friends. I basically enter in almost every 4-H area, so I can't really list them off. The project or animal I want to tell you about is a rabbit that I'm actually just about to show. I brought one rabbit with me to fair this year. He's a chocolate Polish Senior Buck, which means he's brown, he's a Polish variety, he's over six months of age in the fourth weight class and he's a boy. Something I do besides fair and 4-H is I'm a 4-H Clackamas County Ambassador and I just got elected secretary for the Officers Board, I guess, for this next year and I'm really excited to see what happens and what comes of it, so thank you so much for supporting us.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Maggie Gilbert. I'm 16 years old. I'm in Mutsketeers and I'm also a part of Clackamas County Ambassadors. I just got elected Vice President and I'm really excited to see where that leads me. My 4-H, my favorite 4-H project areas would probably be cows and dogs and this animal right here is my four-year-old Australian Shepherd. She's a black fai. She's been with me in 4-H for probably three years now. She's done really well. Worked with her a lot. She's still a little stubborn sometimes, but you know, that's all right. I think something that I've learned in 4-H is that, over the years, is that you need to be patient because you can work with your animal so much, so much over the year and at fair, they can just, they won't do anything and you just have to be patient and I think accept that and that maybe they're just having an off day. So I wanted to thank you guys for supporting us and everything.
So you, you said you were in Mutsketeers or?
Mutsketeers.
What's that?
It's a 4-H dog club.
Oh, okay.
Uh huh.
I have, I have a mini Aussie myself. You're right, they are stubborn.
You got it. Okay, are you ready Ben?
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Isaac Wilsey and I'm nine years old and I'm in Independent Club and I show rabbits and I really like them.
Yeah? Good job.
Thank you.
That's a big rabbit. Who is that? Yep, it's a rabbit.
Hello, my name is Connor O'Neil. I'm 14 and I'm in the Fuzzy Squad 4-H group. I mainly do rabbits, but I also do cooking and my favorite is definitely rabbits because they're really fun to hang out with and these guys are a lot of work. I spend, on average, when they're all in coat, 36 to 40 hours grooming a week, but it's definitely worth it and thank you guys for supporting us.
Thank you.
This is my turkey. He's going to go to the auction. I think it's on Saturday. I'm in the Fuzzy Squad 4-H group and I'm 15 years old and this is my seventh year in 4-H. One of my favorite things about 4-H is probably just working with the animals because it's a lot of fun and I get to see people in their faces when they get to see the animals. A lot of people are super excited and they just love learning about all the animals and petting them. And my 4-H group is kind of like a second family to me because I get to hang out with them and we work together and we support each other and we get to just, we push each other to do our best as well as help each other when we're struggling. I just really enjoy 4-H, it's just one of my favorite things to do. Thank you. Oh, and he's 36 pounds, I was told to tell you guys that.
So I have a question.
Yes?
So my family used to raise turkeys down in McMinnville.
Uh huh.
And so turkeys are not real smart and if it rains, they can drown? Is that true?
Um, I've had turkey chicks drown because they, they're not very smart. When they get older, they're a little too big too, I think, but definitely the little chicks, they, they're not smart at all.
Thank you. Thank you.
So is that how you carry a turkey?
Um, yeah, he's a little heavier. If I had a smaller one, I'd use one hand probably, but he's a little too heavy for me to use one hand.
Well, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Oh, there he goes. Oh no, we're going to see the turkey.
Morning.
Hello, my name is Adriana Hanlon. I show guinea pigs and chickens at 4-H. This is my second or third year in 4-H. I love what I do because I get to show kids who don't usually see a guinea pig and teach them about that and it's really fun for me to learn more things and today I got champion and showmanship and reserve champion and confirmation for my guinea pig and yeah.
Thank you.
Don't hurt the bird there Kevin.
Good morning Commissioners. My name is Peyton Reed, I'm 15 and this is Kai, he's six, is my rabbit. So for 4-H this year, I'm doing rabbits. I love rabbits. But I think 4-H is important because it allows youths to have a chance, like now, to speak to you guys and speak to other people and be able to do, take responsibility for a project, like the rabbits, the 4-H stuff. I mean, just sense of responsibility and accountability, like if it's all up to you, what you put into it is what you get out and I think that's really important that kids these days need to learn, so thank you for this opportunity.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Cody O'Neil. I am 17 years old and I'm a part of the Fuzzy Squad 4-H group. You've seen a few of us around this morning. So 4-H to me is more than just a, a group that meets once a month. It's a community, it's a family. We work together on all different kinds of projects, especially one that I held last October. I held a giant event last October called Family Fun and Food Truck Rally. It was for my Boy Scout Eagle Project and when I needed help setting up that event, I went to my 4-H family and that is... And that is everybody in the Fuzzy Squad, that is everybody in the Small Animal Barn. And because of all of their help and commitment to the project, I was able to spread awareness about the lack of fresh water in developing countries to over 20,000 people and provide a freshwater well. Now, I recognize some of you because I believe two went to the project. I don't know if you guys remember. It was a really, really fun event. It went without a hitch, it was amazing. And I couldn't have done it without my family here at 4H and that is one of the most important parts of 4H. So, thank you for your time, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Morgan Gilbert. I am 24 years old and I'm a 4H alumni of Clackamas County. I'll say just a few words because I can go on and on about the 4H program and how it shaped my life. 4H was a catalyst for me not only giving me a home from where I was bullied in high school, but it taught me so much. It gave me study, it, it gave me a home and it gave me purpose and it sent me into college so well-prepared. I was able to graduate with a double major because of the things that 4H taught me, the hard work, the determination that our 4H leaders instilled in us. That's Paula Means, that's Wendy Hind, and I even got to work with Karen O'Neil who helped really form and shape my young adulthood. And I couldn't have been more thankful for this opportunity to be a part of 4H. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Point that down for me. I think we're rounding out the group today. My name is Karen O'Neil and I'm one of the, one of the team leaders for Fuzzy Squad and one of the team leaders over in the Small Animal Barn. And I just wanted to take a minute to talk to you, I'm going to get teary when I do this, about what happens behind the animal. We call it thinking bigger than the bunny in the Small Animal Barn. When we're doing activities with the kids, and it may be the piece that you don't get to see, where they're taking activities with their animals and taking it into the, into the education system and supporting the education system by teaching younger kids. Our middle schoolers who maybe don't start school until 10:00 AM are going into the elementary schools in that, in that timeframe and teaching them about how eggs hatch and science projects. Adra is one of the ones that came in and worked with an entire team of 57 second graders to teach poultry. She did a great job. We have kids who come in with extreme social anxiety and through the 4H program are capable of talking to you guys and talking in front of audiences and step by step working their way into all of these life skills. We have groups who are raising vegetables through horticulture and feeding the hungry. We have kids who are doing a trick-or-treat so kids can eat program where instead of trick-or-treating for themselves, they're trick-or-treating for canned foods and have collected over the last four years over 1,200 pounds of food to take to food banks. So this isn't a program that stays inside the small clubs and it's definitely not a program that stays here at Fair. This is one that reaches deep into the community and teaches them about their, the 4H pledge very much is, right? My club, my community, my country, and as Cody presented, my world. So we want to thank you so much for your support, that again, bigger than the barn, bigger than the bunnies. And so for this year, they made it back. See, I was stretching that out until they came back from the barn. So for this year, they went together and instead of just sending you a standard thank-you note, all of the kids in the Small Animal Barn helped put together a collage for you and they've signed it as a thank-you note so that you can hang it in your offices. And as you're going through, for me, they are a beacon of hope. So as you guys are going through this year and really having to deal some tough decisions, you can also see that there's hope. These kids are there. So you guys want to go ahead? Thank you again.
Should we do a picture?
Let's get a picture.
Let's go down.
I'm going to make sure I get my goat fix later on.
All right. And with that, we're to citizen communication. I have Dawn Kingsborough. Dawn? What happened to him? Well, let's see, anyone else? Oh. Looks familiar. I think Sandy, City Councilor.
Something like that, yeah. I don't know how I didn't get my little card to you, but I'll do that in a second.
It's too late.
Too late, okay. Yeah, I am Carl Exner from City of Sandy. One of the things I do is the city council, but also I'm very involved in some of the real estate things that are happening. Before I go into that, I'd like to say that my kids went through 4H through here, stayed a lot on these grounds and spent lots of time in the 4H booth and gaining weight or having troubles losing weight from my daughter who did a lot of cooking and the things that she did to make sure she got through all the different things in cooking classes, so, besides the steers and the pigs and all the rest. So that's really great to see all these kids here. Story I'd like to say that I recently experienced in the City of Sandy. I had someone come into our office, and I'm a real estate office. They were looking for something to rent and they were looking, they had, the husband and father had very little amount of money, looking for something on the order of under a thousand dollars a month for rental. And he had a wife and a couple of kids living out of his car, trying to figure out how to make something happen for, living in Sandy. Sandy is about the fifth fastest growing city in the state and so we've got a lot of housing, but it's also a popular spot, lots of high, higher income property and certainly the same thing with our rentals. The city council has decided this year to work on, in fact, we've got a goal and we passed an ordinance to emphasize lower income housing. And I'd like to challenge the county commissioners if there is any way we can get together and find a way to make the possibility of lower income housing available on the East County, I'd challenge you to help us and partner with us if you could sometime in some way. We really do want to see that happen. I just, it just really hurts me to see young families living out of their car, trying to figure out a way to make ends meet. We've got a good economy, but for some reason, some of our jobs are not just not being able to support some of the things that they need to, to make adequate housing. So, again, just want to thank, thank you for allowing us to be out here. It's a great, beautiful day and I love looking at the rest of the Fair, memorizing all the things that I've seen before as a father with all the 4H and FFA events. So, thank you for letting me have a few minutes.
Thank you and I accept your challenge.
Just want to just say one thing to Carl, and that is, at our last C4 meeting, Carl, we discussed actually housing and one of the ideas that we've been talking about the last couple of C4 meetings is that cities can, if they have property they have identified that they own, could actually work with us and possibly a site for some affordable housing units. So there's one opportunity.
Martha?
Real quick there, we have identified properties in our city that are struggling right now and would be really an opportunity. So I guess let's get together and work that through.
And I know I saw Jill Smith here. She's the housing staff and maybe you should connect with her and I'll make sure that she finds you.
Martha?
Yeah, thank you for coming today, Carl. This, I, I think I can speak for all of us up here. I usually don't because we're all individuals, but this Commissioner is very, very dedicated to finding a solution to the housing crisis. And I just visited another city the other day. I'm not going to say which city it is because, but because, you know, we're not sure how we're going to move forward yet, but we have identified a site. And then we will be poised to help any city to fulfill the needs that they have for affordable housing. I mean, that's kind of one of our main agenda items and I'm, I'm going to do a shout out to Sonia Fisher who's been working on this a long time, as well as Commissioner Savis who was responsible largely for getting our Veterans Village up and running. And Paul, do you want to just say a couple of words about that? That was your baby, you actually made that happen. Our Veterans Village and how we...
Yeah, I was just actually sharing with Dawn Kingsborough this morning that not only was the Veteran Shelter a means to get veterans a transition shelter and get them into the system and get them, get them the benefits they earn and get them into permanent housing, but because of the commitment we made at the county, it was recognized, we were able to obtain more VAS vouchers, which a VAS voucher is basically really monies to help for permanent, permanent housing costs, rents. So we actually were able to leverage more of those and actually inspire Northwest Housing Alternatives to build a permanent housing facility in Oregon City. So that's, we'll be, we'll be cutting the ribbon on that here in the next few months. I believe it'll be done towards the end of the year, 24 units of, of housing for veterans in Oregon City. So that's a huge success. So those are the kind of opportunities and inspiring and being a model for how to do it right. So it's, thank you for the opportunity, Martha, to extend that and maybe Commissioner Fisher can add to that as well.
I was kind of hoping Commissioner Fisher would talk because she's really championing this. Do you want to share anything about?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Schrader and Commissioner Savis. I really, my heart really resonates, Counselor, with what you said about families sleeping in cars. I met a woman at Father's Heart who was in her 50s. She'd spent her entire career working for Head Start as an educational assistant with children and then she had a health issue and she was not able to work. She received a little under a thousand dollars in social security disability, could not afford her rent and was sleeping in her car. And with tears in her eyes, she simply said, "I didn't do anything wrong. You know, I just got sick and I'm, and I'm in my car." So, the issue is very serious and as our population continues to age and the income that people have does not keep pace with what it costs to live with the rents, the ever-increasing rents, we as a society have to find the political will to take care of those that aren't able to manage with the incomes that they have. There is a lot of effort on this issue. There's a regional effort through a campaign that's called Here Together to look at chronically or permanently people who have been homeless for quite some time to look at the support services. Because at the end of the day, the cost to the taxpayer, it costs twice as much on our system through our healthcare, our jails, our law enforcement, for people to be homeless than it is to house people. So with that awareness and mustering up the political will and education of our community, I think we can make headway on this issue. So I really appreciate you bringing it to us and thank you so much for all your service.
Yeah, I, I would just want to add that when Metro, the Metro region passed a housing measure, it opens up an opportunity for the money we used to spend here, out in the other areas in the county. And probably the, one of the biggest issues is workforce housing. Up in government camp, a lot of the people who work up on the mountain actually have to sleep in the woods or in their car off some side road. So, we got to figure out how to make that work. And so, this is an opportunity to really talk. One of the things that I hadn't really thought of until recently was some of the cities have urban renewal districts that impact the county. So, why not insist that a portion of that urban renewal revenue help pay for affordable housing in those communities? Happy Valley was one of them and we, within a week or so, we had an agreement that a percentage would pay for affordable housing in Happy Valley, which there isn't any. So, it's an opportunity to create some. Because those people who work at Fred Meyer's, they certainly can't live in a house in Happy Valley. This might give them an opportunity to find a place to live, not, that's not a car.
Paul? Yeah, I just want to add a little bit, so I think we also need to have the personal and political commitment and courage to actually look within our, what we're doing as government to make housing cheaper and not make it more expensive. I mean, not totally related, we heard Mr. Bondi talk about the extended period of time to get a permit, for example, 14 months, a lot longer than anticipated. Well, that same dynamic is true in almost anywhere you want to get a permit anymore. There's a number of things that we're doing, I think, that actually are adding to the cost and adding to the inflation in the housing industry. And I think government should be part solely of the solution and not so much of the problem. So there's a little bit, there's a little bit of things we can do to help prevent that. It's not that we're deliberately doing anything wrong, but I think there's some things we can do to curb the cost and not allow this inflation, if you will, or the, some of these extra costs to build housing or the delays that lead to increasing cost further contribute to the rise in housing cost.
Well, if we had somebody here from our planning department, you'd find that it'll never take a year and a half to get something like this completed. It's probably more like 120 days, but that, that is pretty long. So with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Thank you, Chair Bernard. Today's consent agenda, under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval of a sub-recipient agreement with Northwest Family Services and Community Development Division for Emergency Solutions Grant Funding for the Casa Esperanza Homeless Shelter. Approval of a sub-recipient agreement with Clackamas Women's Services for Community Development Division for Emergency Solutions Grant Funding for the CWS Homeless Shelter. Approval of Amendment Number One to the grant agreement with Northwest Family Services for Culturey-Specific Domestic Violence Shelter and Services. Approval of professional service contract with Clackamas County and Akram Mozon Associated Architect for the Sandy Health Clinic Project. Approval of intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon Housing and Community Services Department to administer Community Resource Division funds. Under our Department of Transportation Development, approval of a board order adopting the vacation of a portion of a 20-foot wide alley and carver, granting an easement to Portland General Electric for the installation of Reader Board at the entrance of the Aquatic Center on Harmony Road. Approval of a cellar replacement renewal order form and relinquishment. Under elected officials, approval for the District Attorney's Office to apply for 2019 through 2021 Victims of Crime. Fine account non-competitive program grant for prosecution-based victim program grant. Under Public and Government Affairs, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Milwaukee regarding payment for services related to the Willamette Falls Locks Commission. Under Business and Community Services, approval of a wood innovation grant award with the US Forest Service to support incorporation of mass timber for the County Courthouse Project. Approval of a First Amendment to the Willamette Falls Legacy Project Rediscover the Falls. Grant agreement by Metro, the City of Oregon City and Rediscover the Falls. And approval of an infrastructure and additional shared cost funding agreement with the Clackamas Workforce Partnership for Fiscal Year 2019-2020. Under your North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, approval of public improvement contract between Clackamas Parks and Recreation District and TFT Construction for the North Clackamas Parks Aquapark Paving Lot Project. And Service District Number Five, approval of a board order certifying the 2019-2020 Assessment Role for Clackamas County Service District Number Five.
Thank you. Does any Commissioner wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
I just wanted to point out, Mr. Chairman, that Item E1, approval of a wood innovation grant from the US Forest Service to support the incorporation of mass timber, also known as cross-laminated timber, for our courthouse.
Yay![674.12][674.12](LAUGHTER).
I wanted to make sure everybody got that one for their crossword puzzle.
I think you said that more than once, Ken.
Bingo? Yeah, bingo.
You said that more than once, though, Ken. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We moved in second, and that we approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Next is the County Administrator Update. That'd be you, Gary.
Yes, Commissioners. I would like, I always like to take this opportunity to share with you some of the great things going on at Clackamas County with our staff and the projects that we do on your behalf for the public. First, the construction of the new wastewater treatment digester at the Tri-City Water Facility. Reached another milestone this month. The digester's roof is now completed, keeping the project on track to open in January 2021. Once up and running, the 1.3 million gallon digester will ensure the continued protection of public health, the environment, and our economic growth of Clackamas County. So, we're on track for that infrastructure project in our county. Dog Services, I'd like to share with you that our staff has so far this year returned 266 dogs with their owners. That is an average of 35 dogs each month so far this calendar year. Another 129 dogs have either been adopted or sent in partnership to rescue organizations. That means that altogether, we have reunited or saved 400 of our four-legged friends this year alone. So, thank you to our Dog Services staff for their fine service every day. That's just two of the great, great, good things happening in Clackamas County. I look forward to having some pie later on today at the fair. That's also on your bingo card. A reminder that the board will be on summer recess for the next two weeks, so the next board business meeting will be on Thursday, September 5, 2019. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. We come to Commissioner Communications, and Paul, you're up first.
Yeah, I just want to just say it's always great to actually be here at the fair, to see all our 4Hers and families and friends, be able to see each other and mingle and see all the great work that's being done. A lot of these kids put a lot of their time and effort in, in whether it's their animals or their projects, and they're displayed here, and it's a lot of pride. It's also great that we, as we heard our, our 4Hers speak earlier about how that really helps shape them and build them and build their character. So, it's awesome to really see, see everyone here. Also, as we look from our view shed here, we kind of see some of the temporary buildings. It was great to hear that the master plan has been completed. It'd be our goal, and I hope, a serious commitment from the Commissioners and, and working with the staff on how we fund the improvements here and to make that master plan vision come to fruition. So, I'm really looking forward to that. I know we all been working hard. It's been, Jim and I have been working and attending a lot of transportation meetings. Our public safety, we had our presentation here on, on Drive to Zero, towards zero deaths, and I think that's really important, especially a lot of people moving around and traveling this time of year, and because of the longer days, people are driving longer hours, and so, just be careful out there, and safety's number one, and I really appreciate the pledge that we all took today. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Ken, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I, I have to say, coming to the county fair is special for me because I grew up in the carnival business. As, as I've told many, I was hawking a pitch when I was nine years old. I liked the junk food they have over there. I grew up on that, and I'm still alive and still standing. So, make sure you get over there and get yourself a funnel cake, get some good greasy french fries, and, and a burger, a hamburger or hot dog, and this is about the only time you get to really, really spoil yourself with absolutely terrible food. It's also the place, believe it or not, where I learned how to ride horses. Because when I wasn't in the stand hawking a pitch, I used to lead the ponies for the pony rides, and I got to ride for free and fell in love with horses. And that young lady from the 4H who talked about horses having a mind of their own, yeah, that's 1,200 pounds of critter with a mind of its own. She's not kidding. On a different note, as you probably can tell, all of us here have somewhat different interests in county government, from social services to housing, to transportation, et cetera. My particular interest has been looking at, at one aspect of, of what county government can do to make sure we get living wage jobs in Clackamas County and not MIC jobs. We will be able to help a lot of people in housing, but we can't do it for everybody. And one of the most important things we can do is to make sure we have a solid economy with businesses that pay living wage jobs. So, yes, I'm a bit pushy about cross-laminated timber and internet service and, and Land Bank Authority, but those will be things that will help bring family wage jobs to our county. And on that note, probably within the next 30 days, we expect to have a, the first cross-laminated timber processing facility opening in Clackamas County in Estacada. I'm looking forward to actually seeing those documents signed, and in two years, the expectation is that'll be about 100 family wage jobs right here in Clackamas County. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for, for my moment, and let's make sure we have a good time at the fair.
Thank you, Ken. Sonia?
Thanks, Chair Bernard. So, being a little nostalgic, which is what happens when you come to the fair, takes me back to one of my very first dates. Now, my dad was really tough on anybody who wanted to take me on a date. He would check driver's licenses. He would do full interviews. But my very first date was the son of one of his friends, who was a local farmer in the Portland area, and that farm is now where Costco is today, it was Trapple Farms. But his, the son Tommy came to pick me up, and we went to the Multnomah County Fair, and I thought, wow, I am going out with a farmer, and he's a really rich farmer because he had a pretty nice car when I was a young 15-year-old girl. But it was so magical, and it was in the evening, and the lights were, you know, sparkling and twinkling along. And one of my most favorite moments is he bought me a T-shirt, and it had a fox on the front of it, and over the words were Foxy. And I felt so special at the fair that year, and it was just one of my best fair memories that I just wanted to share. Now, on a more serious note, as Commissioner Humberson stated, we all have issues that we track and that we're concerned about. For my work and interested in human services and education, I serve on the National Association of Counties National Committee on Human Services. And one issue that we are tracking, which is also in the news right now, is the changes to the rules regarding what is considered a, a public charge. And we are concerned, all the county commissioners across the country, that changes in our federal rules of not allowing certain forms of public assistance, such as SNAP, which is supplemental needs for food for families that need it. Those changes could result in extra struggles and burdens on local governments because we, right here, here, we are the local safety net. So, we are working hard to communicate with our federal government regarding what these changes mean to us at the local level. And I encourage everyone to get educated, get engaged, because we are a community that cares, and especially in Clackamas County. Everywhere you go around this fair and you engage in conversation and you talk about what's important, it shows. So, I really appreciate being here, and I appreciate all of the fun and celebration. Thank you.
Thank you. Martha?
Well, it's, it's great to be here. I want to thank my colleagues, actually. I'm going to be honest, this is one of the best commissions I've ever worked with, and it's such a wonderful group of people. We're all so dedicated, I think, for the good of the county and the good of our citizens. It's just been fantastic. And to that end, this week, my colleagues and our great Administrator, Gary Schmidt, enabled us to host the Association of Oregon Counties Board Retreat. And we actually had dinner on Sunday at the Museum of the Oregon Territory, where what we wanted to showcase was, when you look at the top of that building and you can see Willamette Falls, and you can see the whole vista of the river there, you know, from the top. So, I suggest if you get a chance to visit. But the remarkable thing is that people don't realize sometimes that actually, it is the second-largest waterfall by volume in the United States of America. The number one waterfall is Niagara Falls. So, we've been working very long and hard on the Willamette Falls Legacy Project. We're working with Oregon City, our partners at Metro, and the legacy folks that have formed a foundation. We are well on our way of getting a Riverwalk built and designed on the, on the shores of Oregon City because we believe that, that it's going to be so important, for the first time in 100 years, to give people direct access to the water and the river and to take a look at those beautiful falls. We're also working on the opposite side in West Lynn, working with Unlocking the Locks. We've been working very hard with the Army Corps of Engineers to get a transfer, to get the locks open and operational for the first time, I think, since 200, I want to say 11. It's when they were stopped using them, but we believe that will be an important piece as we work towards making that whole area one of the first national heritage sites on the West Coast. So, that's been, that's been really good. The other thing I, I want to talk about a little bit is my own memories here. I moved to Camby in, let's see, 1979, lived on a farm for 36 years, and my boys today are growing hops on that farm. So, I have long, long memories of this fair and taking my kids to the Kitty Caper Parade, and the first thing they did was run towards the rides, you know? So, we didn't get to see the animals that first day because the little guys just wanted to go on the rides, and that was really fun. But one of my treasured memories, back in 1982, I won my first blue ribbon for my honey. Because I've been a beekeeper, we're actually doing things with pollination on the, in the county now because we're trying to encourage people to learn about bees, learn about pollination, learn when it meets for our food shed. So, I'm just delighted that I had that opportunity way back when, when I was a young woman, to get that blue ribbon, and I still have it. So, with that, I'm going to hand it over to our chair.
Thank you, Martha, and thanks all of you for being here today. Beautiful day, lots of people. Last night, I was here till almost 10 o'clock, and there was a good crowd, and the rodeo event was last night. First off, I want to announce the Third Annual Patriots' Day Remembrance, September 11th, from 6:00 to 7:00, Circle of Honor at Red Soils Complex, which is where our offices are, 150 Beaver Creek Road, Oregon City. Join us and honor and remember the victims of 9/11, the dedicated men and women of law enforcement who risked their lives every day to keep us safe. The program will include Oregon City High School Band, local dignitaries, honor guards, national anthem, Portland Police Highland Guard Pipes and Drums, special tribute 9/11 victims and law enforcement, and a rifle salute, as well as taps. So, I hope you can join us September 11th up at the offices. And I know that Ken and I won't be able to make that because we'll be doing the other job we do, and that is go back to Washington, D.C., and try and bring some of your tax dollars home. One thing that we were very successful this year is bringing back from the state of Oregon money for a new courthouse. The courthouse, we don't really have a final design yet. We have a concept, and it's very possible that we'll be able to bring $100 million back from the state of Oregon to help pay for that courthouse. It's way undersized, and justice is not served because people have to wait a long time. It's not a Taj Mahal. It is going to be designed carefully, and we're not going to spend money we don't have, but it, it will be challenging in this budget time to come with the money to match it because we have to match. So, it's 50% paid by the state. That's one of the, our jobs again, is bring tax dollars you paid back to Clackamas County. It'll be a great opportunity for new jobs, and the site we're looking at is up at Red Soils. The other thing, so the courthouse is great, and Martha, I was going to say that I, I've got the key, I found the key for the locks.
Oh, you did?
So, we can unlock.
We're going to get them unlocked, right, Chair? Thank you.
Yes. It's a big key, though.
Okay.
It's going to take a lot of help turning that. And then, as far as the budget, you know, by state law, we have to balance the budget every year. We cannot have an unbalanced budget. Again, it is challenging. We have some new federal regulations, equal pay law, for example, that has an impact on our budget, but one I agree with. We need to work that out, but, you know, I, there was a comment made that we illegally passed a budget that wasn't balanced, and I can assure you, Gary, is it true? Can we pass a budget that's not balanced?
You cannot. It's a violation of state law, and you're not allowed to, and I'm not allowed to. It must be balanced.
This was Gary's first budget. We have new budget people, and we're working hard to make sure that the taxpayer dollars you pay do the business that needs to be done. And some of that is focusing on areas that are greater, have a great challenge, either housing, you know, folks who, whose incomes aren't high enough to frankly eat sometimes, and I think you mentioned that a little bit. And so, we've, we're looking at three investment areas specifically where our dollars can do the best, and it's Estacada, Milwaukee...
Camby.
And Camby, so here in Camby. So, we look forward to having a discussion and looking at our budget in a different way. With that, I want to thank everyone for playing silent bingo, except for you.
Corn dog.
CLT.
Please be sure to fill out the back of your cards if you haven't done it already. Staff will collect it, and I'd, I'd ask that the vice chair go down and pull a winner's name after the meeting. And with that...
Yes. I thought we were going to do the dog of the day.
Dog of the week.
We, we have no dog of the week because it's all about the kids, the 4H, and the fair animals.
Yeah.
All right. And with that, thank you very much for coming. Great day at the fair. We're adjourned.
All right. Where'd I go? Yay!